Okay, it's just about seven o'clock. Everybody ready? Good evening, folks. It is 7:01 and I hereby call to order the September 2023 meeting of the Village Tivoli Board of Trustees. Would you please join me in the pledge of allegiance to our flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Before we get to the clerk's report, if you picked up an agenda on your way in, I want to announce that we're adding one item to the agenda, which we will do first before those resolutions on the printed agenda. And this agenda item is going to be a motion to authorize the execution of a temporary use agreement with New York State DEC regarding the former water tower parcel. So you can add that to your agenda. Okay. Village Clerk's report, Clerk Brown, please.
Yes, in the past month, there were 705 trash tags sold. Three payrolls were processed by Treasurer Day. Morgue Hill Tyler, their new clerk, continues to work with the planning consultants. And for next month, in October, the Clerk's office will be closed on Monday, October 9th, in observance of Eleanor Roosevelt Human Rights Day in Tivoli.
Excellent. Thank you, Clerk Brown. Trustees, we have two sets of meeting minutes in your binders, the August 16th regular meeting and the September 13th workshop minutes. Is there a motion to approve both sets of minutes? Second?
Second.
Ms. Baldino, followed by Major. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Moving on to the Treasurer's report. This month in the General Fund, we spent $105,405.78, which is also our grand total, 105,405.78. Is there a motion to accept the Treasurer's report?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Mangieri, followed by Baldino. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Is there a motion to pay the bills?
I'll move.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Moving on to a zoning report. And Trustee Schilling is not with us tonight, so I'll read it. Below are the activities from the Code Enforcement Department for the Village Tivoli for the previous month. Building permits reviewed, five. Building permits issued, three. Complaints, two. Complaints investigated, two. There were no zoning or property maintenance violations, no appearance tickets. There were two municipal searches and 12 inspections. Okay, so now we get to the point in our agenda where we invite a public comment on the agenda items. If there's anything you'd like to comment on, you're eager to hear about.
What are public searches?
That is not an agenda item, but I'll answer real quick. Public search is if you're buying a house or selling a house and they go through the real estate records and see if, you know, there was any skeletons in the closet, so to speak, or someone else owned that house and nobody knew about it, or that kind of thing. Yeah.
Sorry.
No worries. Okay, well, we'll get into our agenda and there's, of course, public comment after here as well. So trustees, we discussed this earlier in the workshop. The village attorney has been in discussions with the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation, who want to make extra sure that there's no issue with any sort of residues from the old water tower. And I'll remind Tivolians that the village board, when that was coming down, that we did a whole series of our own testing, which came back with minimal lead presence at two specific localized locations. And on the advice of the village engineer, the safest thing to do is actually leave it in place because it's beneath the sod and beneath the grass and whatnot. But the DEC is going to triple-check this, so we are giving them permission to go on the site and do their testing. And, you know, we're not anticipating anything, but all the same, we've been eager to work with them just in an abundance of caution, so. Trustees, is there a motion to authorize the execution of a temporary use agreement with New York State DEC regarding the former water tower parcel?
So move.
And second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so Council of the Church of Scientology, before you and I depart this evening. Okay, next we have a resolution accepting the Justice Court audit for the year ending May 31st, 2023. So every year, the court, which is, you know, a separate separation of powers, separate entity here, they keep their own books and they have to get audited. And then we, the village board, receive their audit and accept it. So this is a housekeeping thing. There was nothing untoward in the court books. So with that brief context, is there a motion to accept the Justice Court audit report for the year ending May 31st, 2023?
No.
And is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
No, sir.
Roll call, please. Trustee Baldino?
Aye.
Trustee Mangieri?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Major?
Aye.
And I also vote aye. Next, we have a budget modification. We are proposing to move $39,000 out of the Fire Capital Reserve Fund, which is a fund at the end of every fiscal year. Any monies left unspent in the two fire lines or the rescue line, rather than disappearing into the General Fund, we've, five or seven years ago, set up a special account. So that money, when they're thrifty over there at our fire and rescue, we had once authorized this money. It's sort of their money. It should at least be spent on those purposes as we originally intended. So it goes off into its little account. And every couple of years, we take some money out of that to do other fire-related things. So $39,000 is what was in there. And if you recall, last month, we recently purchased a new-to-us used life-duty rescue truck for a total price of $64,000. It was in Houston, Texas. There aren't a lot of these things on the market. And so actually, several members of the TFD flew down there to Texas and took turns driving this new truck back. They made it back in 32 hours without stopping by rotating drivers. So we're moving that money and that's what this budget mod is for. Is there a motion to accept the budget modification? And a second?
Second.
Roll call, please. Trustee Baldino?
Aye.
Trustee Mangieri?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Major?
Aye.
And I also vote aye. We are also anticipating a nice contribution towards that truck from our friends at the town of Red Hook. So we appreciate their working with us and helping us support our fabulous fire department. Next, we have a resolution authorizing the submission of a fiscal year 2024 Dutchess County Community Development Block Grant Application. So we put into the CDVG program every year. I'm pleased to say Tivoli has a pretty good track record. We're probably about four out of five years we win one of these. But again, we're competing against all our friends in the other municipalities around the county. And we are going to have a public hearing on October 11th at 6:00 to hear from the public about our idea, which I'll tell you in a minute, and any other ideas the public may have. In recent years, we have been successful winning CDVGs for Pine Street Phase 1 and 2, which was the BioSwale and the Bus Stop. We got one two years ago, which is going to the firehouse expansion for drainage projects. And we also got one last year, which is the new sidewalk going in over there on Broadway. So we've been working with the village engineer Crawford and Associates to work up these block grants. There are different categories. They're usually around $150,000 or $200,000. So you sort of have to have a project that fits within that. And it occurred to us that at $200,000, we could actually start tackling some of the stormwater concerns in the development. And as you know, over the last year, the village board has worked with Time Bond to do some serious analyses of what could be done to improve the flooding in that area. And because we sort of have done that light work, it would wrap up nicely into a grant application. So that's our idea. You'll hear more about it on October 11th. And if you have other ideas, see you on the 11th at 6:00 PM. But for now, we want to engage Crawford and Associates to start preparing an application. Is there a motion to do so?
Well, Mr. Mayor, the resolution you're packing, I think, is the one for after October 11th or for October 11th. So I think we just want to make a motion for the engagement of the engineer at this time, right?
All right, so we'll downgrade that from the resolution. We'll hold that until after the resolution.
And then do a motion just to authorize the work order.
The work order?
Because we have a contract.
Yes.
So there's authorization for it.
Thank you, Council. Okay, so we're going to reword that. This is, I'm asking for a motion to engage Crawford and Associates for a work order by 2024 CDVG.
Move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so we'll let Crawford and Associates know they can get started. Lastly, we have a resolution establishing a standard workday for the position of village justice. This is something made to do for the New York State retirement system. Various employees of the village have the opportunity to enroll in the state retirement system. And we have to set what's called the standard workday for most of the office personnel, such as the clerks. It's a seven-hour day. For my position, it's a six-hour day. And then there's also how many days a month. Now, we have a supporting calendar that's been provided for us, which is part of this process, three months' worth of the justices' time. In that case, unlike my schedule, which is very erratic and dynamic, it's, there's court night, two Mondays a month, and there's usually three or four hours. So she filled that out. So we're proposing to call her standard workday seven hours and that there would be one day per month. So it kind of fits nicely in that case. Is there a motion to adopt this standard workday and reporting resolution for the position of village justice with the standard workday of seven hours and a one day per month? And is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please. Trustee Baldino?
Aye.
Trustee Mangieri?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Major?
Aye.
And I also vote aye. Okay. So that's our agenda. Our next board meeting will be held Wednesday, October 18th at 7:00 PM here at the Historic Watson Taster Hall, with the workshop proceeding at 6:00 PM. Those workshops are held in the mayor's office across the hall here. And our regular workshop is October 11th at 6:00 PM. But because we have the public hearing on the CDVG, we're probably going to do it upstairs, just to let you all know. So that's our schedule next month. And moving into committee reports. Trustee Schilling can't be here, but LoSAP is in his wheelhouse. And so I want to mention, I want to remind everyone that there's a special election coming up relating to LoSAP. It's going to be on Tuesday, October 24th. Each village, Village Tivoli and Village Red Hook, are each having a special election on the same day. Ours will be on the 24th, noon to 9:00 at the firehouse. And this is a valid proposition. And the proposition is, should we increase the LoSAP benefit, which has been $500 for about 16 years, to the new state-allowed maximum of $1,200 a year? So before I bury you in more detail, special election, October 24th, at the firehouse, noon to 9:00. Okay. So Tuesday before Halloween, yeah. So for our volunteer first responders who do what they do and are unpaid, there is a program called the Length of Service Awards Program. It's authorized by the state. It's essentially a very, very modest sort of a little retirement package. If the first responders meet a certain number of points per year, they qualify in this program. Points are, you know, how many calls did you attend, meetings, trainings, et cetera. Every time they meet those points, they get $500. And this is all invested. And, you know, there's an interest account. And then when they reach 65, they can get several thousand dollars. And we are, we believe that increasing that amount is like the least we can do for what they do. So I hope people will come out and support the proposition. And again, it's to increase the annual benefit from $500 to $1,200, which will obviously add up by the time our first responders hit 65. All right, that is me talking free. For bill, how about Trustee Baldino, please?
So this month, the justice report here is $3,010 in fines, $865 in surcharge, $0 in civil fees, for a total of $3,875.
It's a remarkable number of traffic violations.
These reports are longer.
Yeah, they're.
Yeah, wow.
Two and a half pages.
There's a lot of stop park violations.
Yeah.
I'm assuming is stop sign.
What we're seeing here is the presence of Red Hook PD in the village and the thorough job they're doing. And yeah, it's a lot of just stop signs.
Safety stuff. There's speeding.
Speeding. So easily avoidable tickets, but, you know, it's good to have this enforcement because clearly people are running those stop signs along the line, so. I'll also add, we'll see this next month, but in the last couple of weekends, we've had quite a number of open container tickets issued. We've had a noise violation and we've had a nuisance gathering violation as well. We tend to see new people in the village in September every year and they aren't familiar perhaps or in agreement with our quality of life laws, but we take them very seriously. And I'm pleased that Red Hook PD has been vigilant about that stuff. So we'll look for those in next month's report. Anything further, Trustee Baldino?
I don't know.
Okay, Trustee Mangieri, please.
For the month of August, the police report had a total of 19 incidences, 17 uniformed traffic tissue, traffic tickets.
Crying over those stop signs.
I was thinking issues and tickets that came out of tissues. Five parking tickets were issued and there were zero arrests.
Thank you, Trustee Mangieri. Deputy Mayor Major?
Yes, okay. Well, October, September, October, it's a big, big history time for some reason. There's a lot going on at the site. So Historic Red Hook is running their annual cemetery crawl, which is super cool. So dedicated volunteers have researched a few interesting dead people locally and in each of the little cemeteries in the town of Red Hook and in the villages. So if you go to historicredhook.org and check it, check it out there. You can get the information. Or you can go to the Historic Red Hook table at Hardscrabble and they will hook you up. And basically, it's like you get a little booklet and you go to the different cemeteries and you learn about the people and you can get, you get your booklet stamped as you collect the deceased resident. Also, there will be a gravestone preservation talk at St. John's Reformed Church in Upper Red Hook on October 1st at 2:00 PM. And, you know, gravestone cleaning is so satisfying. You know, you see these granite markers or, you know, marble markers and they're all like crusted up and unreadable. And, you know, you just clean up and see and just see the different iconography, right? Like when you go to old cemeteries, you'll see that like a lot of gravestones will have willow trees, right? Like that's a pretty classic symbol. And some will have, like if it's a child, they'll have like a lamb. And if you go to the red church, there's a whole, just to the right of the church itself, there's a row of these little headstones about this big. And they all have, it's either a peapod or a, one of those like snowdrop flowers. And it's a whole line of Hoffman children who tragically died in the mid-1800s. But they're just, they're beautiful to see. So it's a sort of a form of art and sculpture that maybe is underappreciated. Also, Historic Red Hook is having a celebration of their 10th anniversary at the Elmendorf. And that's going to be October 5th from 6:30 to 8:30. There's going to be food and music and, you know, and hang out and celebrate the town's history. And friendsofclermont.org, I recommend going there because along with, there's going to be a forest bathing excursion, which is, you keep your clothes on. And it's like a walk in the woods. And being in nature, appreciating nature and feeling the restorative effects of that in a lovely landscape. And what else? There's like an autumn story time and the ghost tours in the mansion are going to be starting up soon. Other historic things, Montgomery Place grounds, the Montgomery Place campus at Bard. The grounds are beautiful. It's a great place to look across the river and see the, you know, see the leaves changing color. The grounds are open from dawn to dusk. But the tours at the mansion are suspended for now for the most exciting reason, which is that Bard got a $750,000 grant as part of the Save Americas Treasures Program, which is a federal, a federal program for historic properties. And that is to fix up the outside of the mansion, which has, you know, been deteriorating. And, you know, it's needed some work and now it's going to get it. So that's, that's awesome. Because it's expensive to keep up any home, especially, you know, one that's 219 years old and doesn't get a lot of use. So good job, Bard. Tivoli Bay is, get on out there. The tics are still not too livid, like they're not super active just yet. So get out there and enjoy it, but wear your orange. Because there's been some hunting out there lately, like squirrels. So watch your ankles. And the canoe launch is still in. It's usually in until around Eleanor Roosevelt and Human Rights Day in Tivoli. So get out there and enjoy some time on the water while you can.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. A few other good things I want to touch on. The Tree Committee has been meeting regularly and I have some graving members. And there are, some of them are extremely overqualified, having worked for the urban forestry department in New York City, for example. They are working on an entire map of the village and plotting all, we're doing a survey of all the public trees. And so you may have seen us out around Broadway with our measuring tapes and noting conditions. So eventually, this will be all digitized and we can put pins in at the trees. And every year, we can say, it grew this much, it got sick, it's doing great. So they're doing that work. We also went up to Monument Hill and have a little planting plan for this fall. There's a few small dead maples and a dead crab apple up there. And we're going to remove those and replace them with a yellow wood, which if you're familiar with it, gets these beautiful sort of teardrop white blossoms in May. So thinking perhaps a Memorial Day, that might look nice. And also some, they're called Japanese lilacs. There's one in front of the wine shop. So a couple of those, we will probably be planting in October. So we'll let you know if you want to come up with your gloves and shovel and help us out. So that will be good. Since the wonderful presentation from Teconic Resources for Independence last month with Executive Director Lisa Terracone and her associate John Rossi, I know some of you were there and it was just a really great presentation. I've been meeting with Tivoli resident John Corcoran. And he and I are going to sort of work on a few things related to increasing accessibility and inclusion in the village, both in the public, meaning village government, and private, meaning our businesses spaces. We are looking into an automatic door opener on our back door, which we currently do not have, you know, one of those things you press the button and it opens nice and slowly so wheelchair can get through more easily. We are likely to start grinding some of our sidewalks where the curb, where they've been heaved a little bit, you know, over time. Sometimes those aren't even. That's, those are two of the village things. But also, John has been making a survey of all our businesses and we're working on a letter to them to just make sure they know about the requirements of the ADA and suggest to them, you know, there's opportunities to put certain language, certain statements like on your website and just let people know, you know, you may be accessible, but if you don't say, it's that door over there or not this door over here, you know, little things that maybe haven't been thought of. So, you know, I want to thank Lisa and John for working with us all year and we're going to keep, keep some of that stuff going forward. This weekend is going to be busy. We've got hardscrabble over in our sister village, Red Hook. On the 23rd is hardscrabble. And then back here in Tivoli on Sunday is a chicken barbecue at the, put on by the Tivoli Fire Department, although I was scolded today for getting my ticket so late. I got it this morning.
I saw, the sign says sold out.
Yeah. I think I got the second to last ticket.
Yeah, they sell it pretty quick, but.
There's no privileges for being mayor of Tivoli, so that's, that's how it should be.
What if you just want sides? Can you still?
I don't, they said 250 dinners. So congratulations to them for selling out. I also should have done this last month, but thankfully Clerk Brown reminded me. Camp Scatico, our neighbor over that way, donated two beautiful benches to the village. They're under the pavilion. They're sort of heavy-duty, pressure-treated benches. And they actually have a, different programs for their campers. So some of the nine-year-olds, they helped us fold. They were looking to do volunteer work in the communities adjacent. And so some of the nine and 10-year-olds folded some of our yard sale maps back in July. They don't, they don't let them use the power tools yet. But the 13 and 14-year-olds, there's a wood shop over there and they worked with their, their people over there to make these two benches. So they came to Tivoli, they're in the park, and I just want to thank Camp Scatico. It's, they're nice. They came during camp and I got a great photograph of a whole bunch of our campers making the best seven completely different kid faces you could make. I mean, cute and the wise guy and, you know, and then I'm standing behind them. So we sent that back to Scatico and said, you know, test drive, it's looking good. Want to remind everyone about the special election again for the LoSAP increase on October 24th. And I'm going to kick it back to the deputy mayor to talk about.
Street painting!
Street painting.
Okay, so September 30th, it's our annual street painting event. We are ready and excited. Ring date is going to be October 1st. Hopefully, we don't need it. Be nice to.
Which is the Sunday right after.
Yes.
Not the next week.
The very next day.
Very next day.
And any of you early birds who'd like to come out and help? You know, it takes a lot to get the street ready to be painted. Like we have to do the sweeping and then, and then we do the pre-painting, which is we lay out all of the 10x10 squares and then roll them with tempera. So if you have ever harbored any fantasies about industrial painting and would like to use, you know, double bar rollers, right? Right, that's the best part.
That's the best part.
Yeah. And if you're feeling like maybe your artistic skills aren't, you know, somewhere up to snuff, just come and, you know, help us out. And we'll be gathering volunteers at about 7:30 in the morning. So come on out or send me an email at deputymajor@gmail.org? Gmail.com? Gmail.com. But yeah, it's, it's such a fun day. And we're going to have music from our, you know, the house, the village band, the hootenanny. And yeah, this is going to be great. So come on out and don't wear clothes you care about, because you could get turkey.
All right. September 30th.
Porch shoes.
Okay. That's, that's us. Is there any public comment before we close tonight's meeting?
I noticed the benches, they look really nice over there. Like really sturdy.
Great, good.
Long, long last images.
Good.
But as I went through Park Day, I also noticed the big white rocks at the entrance to the park off of the, the Ford Drive. Yeah, that's great. It really sets off the walk at the entrance to the park. Yeah, that's great, it really sets off the walk of the entrance to the park there.
I think so. They, um, you know, the impetus for having placed all those stones is actually how often, uh, thoughtless people go driving into the grass and rut up the park. It happens, it used to happen a lot, but it's gonna be pretty hard to happen now that we've got those rocks, but it does add a touch of, uh, aesthetic class, I think.
It does, really. I wonder why there are two a month, I get one and one the other.
If you look at the topography and you were thinking, I'm gonna drive in this park, you need two there, and one will do the job over here, so we'll see, yeah.
Where do those rocks come from?
Uh, we purchased them from Cala Russo.
Oh, okay. Yeah, pretty great.
Yeah, yeah, they're, they're good, so. Um, you know, and we replaced a lot of those old, you know, they were, they were like pieces of foam pole that had been along the park, they were probably once nice fat ballers, but they rotted and fell, and, you know, so this is like, these stones aren't gonna rot as fast as the, so, thank you. Yes, counsel?
Anything special planned for El Row Day?
I put something in your box, which actually I forgot to mention to you.
Oh, I didn't know.
There's, there's a big historic talk going on. We'll have to look at it. If we come up with something, we'll, we'll let you know. No plans just yet.
Any ideas?
Yeah.
I just think it's such a special place in Tivoli, and...
Totally.
I, I like a gathering over there.
Okay, well, maybe we can...
Well, let's, you and I have a conversation, and we'll make it happen.
Okay.
Okay, good.
Great, yeah, it's sort of timely thing, I've been watching the U N General Assembly the last few days, think of how hard she worked to create that organization, and how we're, how we're doing or how we're not doing these days, so. Okay, um, anything else from the board? Thank you all very much, is there a motion to adjourn? Uh, that was, uh, Mangeri followed by Major, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, seven-thirty-three. Thank you all very much.